January 29th, special meeting of Glendale City Council. May we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Agarjanyan.
Present.
Devine.
Here.
Garpetian.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Mayor Sinanian. Here. May we have the report, please?
The agenda for the January 29, 2019, special public meeting of the city council was posted on Friday, January 25, 2019, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Very well, what's next?
One would be Director of Community Development regarding preliminary downtown specific plan draft amendments for review, one, a motion providing additional direction to staff.
Who's going to present that item?
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, we've got the dynamic duo of Bradley Calvert and Vilja Zemtitas, who have been before you at least two times to go over the preliminary downtown specific plan amendments. And council has had, by way of workshops that we've held with, with the council, the ability to provide feedback. This is another touch point in that process. So I will hand this over initially to Vilja.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Beers. Councilmembers, again, matter before you is an update to the downtown specific plan. And we're just going to set up in terms of the PowerPoint presentation. The intention of today's meeting is to recap the council's consensus on the concepts that we presented to you on November 20, just at the end of last year, and as well as to highlight the proposed or preliminary drafts that you received in your packet. These preliminary drafts addressed urban design, open space, and what we are calling now the community benefits chapter, which was renamed from the incentives and bonuses chapter, and also to go through the next steps as we continue with this update process. The slide before you essentially is a timeline, a visual timeline of the process. As you'll notice, that we've had two meetings with you so far. This is our third meeting with city council, and we still have a presentation before the Designer View Board, Planning Commission, and we're coming back to you hopefully on March 5 for introduction. Council's feedback from November 20, including directions for the urban design standards to require modulations in height, scale and proportion criteria, building separation requirements, overall building design and materials, and facade design and fenestrations, if you recall. There was also quite a bit of discussion on streetscape requirements and that we would improve the pedestrian experience by requiring greater building setbacks and wider sidewalks and creating criteria to ensure interesting street-level facades and to require additional street trees for shade. We also discussed various standards that we can include in the open space chapter to make sure that all that open space be usable and attractive and significant. I'll turn some of the slide presentation over to Mr. Bradley Calvert to continue.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council members. Before we dive too deep into some of the proposed changes, as stated, we're not here to go through all of the details, it's more about kind of the big rocks, some of the things we heard from council and how we wanted to approach them. We'll touch on some of the minor elements as well. But before doing that, I wanted to give a little bit of context. Excuse me, recently in the APA, American Planning Association Magazine, Planning, which is kind of the leading journal for our profession, they actually discussed the issue that we're taking up here, and that's how do we take subjective standards, guidelines, and turn them into objective measurable goals? And really, the reason why I bring this up is because we're not the only city dealing with it, and that the path that we're charting on is a good one, it's an appropriate one, it's one that other cities are also moving forward with as well, is that especially with conflicting elements in terms of trying to create affordable housing, how do we still ensure that we get a quality product within our urban fabric? So this article, it actually highlighted Redwood City and how they were transforming some of their subjective standards into more objective, or their subjective, or their objective kind of guidelines into something that's measurable. Another city, Atlanta, Georgia, is another example of that. They recently brought on a new planning commissioner a couple of years ago, and essentially his tagline was he will not tolerate bad design anymore. And that was through improving standards, improving guidelines, improving how they measure what is good design. Essentially, he'd said quality design is not negotiable and developers need to aim higher. And the example that we show here, this is an initial submittal for a hotel in Midtown, not too dissimilar from some of the projects that we've seen, large, boxy elements, kind of monotone in color. And he essentially demanded that it be redesigned based on their standards, and this was the product that was brought forth. It was much more context-specific, context-sensitive. This is at an intersection where two of the buildings are from 1920. Obviously, this building doesn't need to take on a more modern approach, but one that actually matches the characteristics or speaks to. It still has elements of modernity in it, it's not devoid of a modern application, but it speaks to historically what's around it. The other thing I'd like to point out here, and again, this is something we'll bring back on March 26, is raising that submittal standard, the quality of the graphic and what they're depicting of the project, they want to build on the left versus what they brought back the second time. It shows the context, it shows the depth of this building and what are the things that I appreciate, and we've heard from council members as well, that there's depth to the fenestration, there's depth to the windows, and they illustrate that here. They illustrate what that surrounding environment is. So this is really what we're aiming for, through the DSP process, ultimately through that process improvement that we'll bring in March as well. And this example is called the Modera. This is in Atlanta, Georgia as well. This is at the prominent intersection of Lenox and Piedmont. You'll notice that the name is familiar because we also have a Modera, also by Mill Creek Apartments. What you'll notice in this project is that they have a substantial corner public space. You'll see that they have a pass-through, which will take you to another substantial corner public space. The reason why I bring this up is that, again, same developer, same project, same name, and they were able to get very different results because they asked for them, they demanded them essentially, they set standards and goals that ensured that they would get them. This is not the only Modera project in Atlanta, Georgia. They actually have two more, which have similar densities, similar height restrictions as ours, and they were able to get graceful high-rises out of it, again, because they require it, they demand it out of their standards.
That's ours, isn't it?
That's ours there, yes, correct.
Can you go back to the last, this is what they achieved after redesigning?
No, this was actually what they did based on the existing guidelines for that area.
And what was the one before, the slide before?
That was just the other corner of it, essentially. So you can see one corner plaza here, correct. And that pass-through that you see takes you out to the other side, so that that whole area is publicly accessible. It's not an apples-to-apples comparison, obviously there are a lot of different factors, but it does show that if you ask for something specific, we set a certain standard, a certain objective, it can be achieved as long as we're asking for it. And then, this is a point that I'd like to make before we go into the next couple of slides, because as we've shown before, we have dramatically expanded some of the chapters and the sections that we cover. And it's not to make this process more complicated. We're not trying to design this to create a more difficult process or to engineer a very specific result from our projects. We don't want them to all look the same, we don't want the same materials, the same massing. But it is intended to bring consistency to all of our applicants, and it's to give council and our staff a measurable criteria that we can define what is a good project, what is befitting of the city's vision, of council's vision, and of the community's vision, while also making sure that the benefits that we are obtaining from these projects are essentially of maximum benefit. So the first section we'd like to cover, urban design, dealing with buildings. What you see on the left, that is the existing DSP, and what we are proposing is to expand it out to, obviously, several additional elements here. We're still focusing on many of the core features, the massing, but we're also trying to encourage better results when it comes to those smaller things, particularly at the pedestrian level, and we'll touch on those at the end of this section. One of the main things that we heard from council is that the buildings are too boxy, and there's several approaches that we can take. The first that we looked at was how do we encourage roofline modulation essentially? And again, we're not trying to engineer a very specific result from every project, so what we have done is essentially proposed four solutions, four alternatives. It's not obstructing any others from being proposed, but this is kind of the starting point for all applicants. This first top-left corner, what we're referring to is just as roofline modulation, that's ensuring that the roofline changes by at least 10 feet for every 150 linear feet, most of our blocks range somewhere between 200 and 300. That should give us at least one, if not two, variations in that roofline. One to help encourage a single massing to appear is multiple buildings in some ways, when coupled with some other things we'll discuss, but also just to bring visual interest to the skyline. The lower one is the upper-level step-back. This is the idea that we don't want the buildings entirely towering over the streets, that they step back, they respect the pedestrian environment, they frame an environment that is friendly for pedestrians, it feels more like a room, less than a dominating, large massing that looms over the street. Some examples there on the right side of essentially what we'd like to be able to achieve with these standards, the upper-level step-back there at the bottom. Two others that we proposed, the corner feature, we heard from council that was also something that they appreciated in some of the more recent projects. Again, following the same standard, that there's a maximum distance before we need to see some sort of change in height, and this can be done through that corner element. An example, this one actually from downtown Los Angeles. And then the height averaging concept, which we had brought before, is that we would allow, in some locations, provided that they were not buffering a transition area, that height could be exceeded if it was averaged out over the whole site. So half of the site would have to still be under the height requirement in order to do this. This one would help us achieve that kind of distinct look of two different buildings. It also gives us another mechanism to establish a good buffer from the multifamily neighborhoods that are adjacent to downtown. Also, what we're proposing to improve in terms of that overall massing is modulation along the facade, so that we don't get 300-foot-long facades that are just flat, that there would be some breaks that are required. A major break, which we would define as somewhere between 6 and 12 feet wide, at least 2 feet deep, every 150 feet, a minor modulation every 50 feet. And this, again, would keep that facade from being so static, such a hard datum line that's kind of uninspiring and lacking visual interest. A couple of examples there of how, that can also be coupled with a change in materials, it can be coupled with balconies as well, that you can put those into those recesses, or they could be protrusions, depending on how they approach the property line and the setback line. Building separation, again, that the goal of trying to create the image of two distinct buildings, we have a number of examples where the building separates above the first floor, so for the pedestrian, it doesn't feel any different, it still feels like 300 continuous feet of building, that tends to be rather monotonous, that we bring that down to the ground level, that it has to open up at ground. That has to be at least 20 feet deep, and an example, one that we've used before as well, that you can still have access to the center of the building, this could be the main entry, it could be many things, it could also double as open space, depending on the configuration, but the idea that, again, this building breaks up into two distinct massings to really kind of create a more human-scaled environment. Materials, another item that we heard a lot from council about, that they were not pleased with the EFS or STACO, that there was too much of it, there was the singular color, we're getting these white boxes. So in this case, we would have certain requirements along the street level. This isn't to define a certain palette of materials that would always have to be used. You'll see that we do provide examples, it's a starting point, it would be up to the applicant to demonstrate to us that they have created concrete panels that are of human scale, whether that's through some sort of scoring or treatment, but they would need to provide materials that relate to the human scale and not just large panels of EFS or aluminum panels. And then, as you move up the building, we would allow EFS, but it would be a limited percentage, I believe we have it at 40% right now. The idea that you make the building appear less boxy, less bulky as you move up by encouraging more glazing. In this example here, it's actually paired with a building step-back, so again, trying to reduce that imposing nature of a taller building. The facade design itself, it's been uninspiring in many cases. We've seen these standard aluminum storefronts that are put in place, they all look the same, maybe a building has three or four retail entries and they all look identical. In this case, we are trying to encourage, we would set standards that would encourage more diverse entries, maybe ones that swing up or swing open, things that are more engaging with the street. So there would be a limitation on the number of standard storefront entries, aluminum storefront, as we typically refer to it. But we've also put in other measures that include treatment to corner features. While we may like that increased height at the corner, what also happens at the pedestrian realm? Is there different paving to acknowledge the fact that this is a special moment? Are there marquees and canopies, things of that nature? So we've reinforced the idea that if we're going to do a corner feature, a landmark feature, that the pedestrian realm must also speak to that as well. And this slide kind of summarizes all of the other smaller elements that we looked at. We've heard comments about canopies projecting out over the public realm, pulling that back. Essentially, either all balconies need to be recessed into the building or partially recessed, and we set a standard for that, on how many can actually be partially recessed, but eliminating that projection over the public right away past the property line. Canopies, the idea that that actually helps improve the human scale, especially on a taller, lower level of a building. Fenestration patterns, it doesn't do us a lot of good if we have a change in patterns, but all the windows look the same. Materials may differentiate, but you can see in that middle example, as those materials change, so does the fenestration pattern. So it creates that kind of visual interest and that complexity. Limiting planters, garage entries, trying to orient more of those on the alleys, less on the streets, and how we integrate utilities in the building, so that we create less trip-hazards, we create less unsightly utilities, and bury those into the facade of the building, or in the case of garage entries, they're underneath drop ceilings. I'm going to turn it over to Vilja to discuss the public realm.
Okay. In addition to quite a bit of urban design criteria that's been proposed for the actual building, the private development, staff has really looked at the public realm as well. And, has the work being continued? So, in regards to the public realm, there's quite a bit of discussion at last council session on concepts and as well as on the workshop of prior to that, that many of the streets are not pedestrian-focused, they're uninviting, they're somewhat hard and cold, especially Central Avenue, where you have the high vehicular traffic, that we really needed to improve the standards and criteria for the public sidewalk, the public realm as well. So in response to that, staff has drafted criteria for sidewalks and setbacks. We've addressed in the urban design chapter, standards for the different streets, whether it be the commercial streets or residential streets, so that we've actually expanded the setback requirements. We've also included criteria for the width of the parkway, which would be the landscape portion directly adjacent to the curb, the width of the sidewalks, and the area that's directly adjacent to the building itself. So we have specifically addressed the public realm, if you so call it that, or the actual setback requirements on all of the downtown specific plan streets. In addition to that, we have classified all of the downtown streets. If you recall, from the existing DSP, there were only three classifications of streets. One would be the primary, which would be a Long Brand Boulevard. The second classification was the entertainment street, which was just basically what used to be called the Maryland Arts and Entertainment District, which now is the Arts-Soc, or in this case, the Glendale Arts District, Arts and Entertainment District. And then the third classification was the residential, and this would refer to the East Broadway District. What staff has responded to now is that we have identified five different classifications of streets. So we have primary, we have mixed-use commercial, mixed-use commercial would be the streets that are in the darker blue, mixed-use residential, which now are the streets highlighted in light blue on this slide, and then we have kept residential streets and entertainment streets. So by introducing the street typology, we then identify the different criterias for the various streets. So that will really help determine the experience that individuals have on these streets, and then also give specific standards for the developers in addressing such things as, I'm going to continue on, as the frontages. How are you identifying and designing those street frontages, whether they be commercial or residential? The various urban amenities, whether you're going to have street trees, or seating, or the number of trash receptacles available at that location. The floor-to-ceiling heights, the clearances between the sidewalk and any type of balconies or whatnot, and then also the projections and overhangs. And so whether that be for the canopies, or weather protection, or other design criteria that you are including on your street frontages.
Go back to one.
Oh.
We actually, one more thing to point out here is that this is not a one kind of size-fits-all for each of these streets.
Question, please.
Yeah. Could you explain the color coding one more time? You have written next to it, but it's so small, I guess.
Yes.
Even on this paper, and then you make it a page, so it became worse.
Of course.
It's hard to read what it says.
Of course. The slide before you, and is also seen in both of your packets, so if you would like a larger map, it is part of the urban design, I'll get that page number for you in just a second.
Yeah, I see it here, but there's still, there's no color on it.
No color.
Here is very small and the other one is very...
There's another section, I will refer that to you in just one moment. But the streets highlighted in red, and this would be the portion, right now, that I'm using my arrow, these are the primary streets. These are the primary streets simply because this is Brand Boulevard, it already has its signature design. You'll notice that they have, the sidewalk has its own distinct design, the diagonals with the brick facing and whatnot. So we're going to maintain Brand Boulevard as the primary signature street. The hot area highlighted in a dark maroon, and this would be what is now the Arts-Soc Avenue, previously the Maryland District, and this is, arrows, and this will remain the entertainment district, so it will be the primary focus of entertainment, restaurant uses, active ground floor spaces. The area highlighted in dark blue, which would be the areas along Central Avenue, as well as the northerly portions of Brand and the streets north of the 134, these are going to be commercial mixed-use. So the primary feature along the street frontages would be the commercial activity, which would not limit you from having multifamily residential up above. So it would be a commercial mixed-use type of identification. The streets highlighted in light blue, which would be the cross streets going east-west as opposed to the north-thouth, commercial mixed-use streets, these would have more of a residential flair and flavor to them, however, they would still permit mixed-use development. So these would be on the side streets as a connectivity type of focus towards the commercial mixed-use along Brand, along Central, and along Orange. And lastly, the streets highlighted in green would remain as the residential East Broadway District. And so you would definitely have the primary multifamily, lower-density residential developments along the streets between Broadway, Wilson, and north of Colorado, on the easterly side of the downtown specific plan. And thank you, I believe Ms. Beers pointed out the page, so I appreciate it, it's page 4-14, for those of you who have your Exhibit 1 from your staff reports.
And you'll notice along the frontage roads along 134 that we have dashed that line, and that's because that may be an appropriate location for commercial uses, but it doesn't mean that the dimensional standards of the parkways or the sidewalks may need to be the same. We want the same character, we want the same uses along there, but in some cases, we may have a special circumstance. So in that one, it's not, it's reflected in your text in the document you have, but wider buffers. This is a busy road, it's a one-way road coming off the freeway, so how do we help protect pedestrians and still create an amenable environment for them? So we still give it that classification, it just has different dimensional standards.
I have a question.
Yes, Mayor Sinanian, or forgive me, Councilmember Garpetian.
Yeah, thank you. Right now, are we rezoning this area? I mean, all this primary, mixed-use, commercial, mixed-use, what is the difference between current zoning and proposed zoning?
We are not rezoning this, we are not at all...
So this is the way it is right now?
This, what is being proposed is essentially street typologies, street classifications, which would then relate to the type of design principles and criteria that would apply to these streets. So for instance, if it's a commercial mixed-use project or a mixed-use street, you'll have more storefronts. I'm going to allow...
Correct, we're not changing the zoning here, what we're doing is influencing the design and what fronts those streets. It's essentially the components that create that pedestrian realm, and so that we have a consistent experience when you're moving down, say, Central, the focus would be on commercial uses. If you look at that kind of light blue area, the focus would be on residential. It does not prohibit commercial services, but we like a majority of your street frontages to focus on residential in that case.
I understand, so...
Or the inverse for commercial.
So on Central, it says mixed-use commercial, right? Which is the dark blue.
Correct.
So are we going to require them to have commercial, retail, or what have you on the ground floor for sure, or it's an option that they have?
It would be the primary focus use. Obviously, we would have instances where lobbies occur, we would need entries to garages in some cases if we can't have alleys, but the primary focus would be commercial uses. Still allow residential, but we want majority commercial on there. It's a street that is not necessarily appropriate for, say, stoops, residential stoops would be facing out on a busy street, so it's encouraging a use that's more compatible with that.
So what I'm saying is not a requirement, it's not a condition, it's a recommendation, basically. Because most of the projects right now, they have some commercial, most of them are on the corner. If there's a corner property, it's on the corner, they have one commercial, and then the rest, there is no commercial along Central in the projects. But my question is, is this going to mandate having a commercial in the bottom floor, or it's just an option that we are recommending or encouraging them to do?
It's not entirely commercial, but when there is a use at street level, we want the majority of it to be commercial. Again, you'll see in a number of these developments that there's different things kind of going on at street level, but when they're going to put a use in there and they have a choice between residential and commercial, we want the majority of that to be commercial, because that's what's engaging on that street. It's the more appropriate use, and it actually is consistent with a number of the developments. If you look at, say, Legendary, they do have a commercial use at the corner, but also continuing down the street, so it's ensuring that the rest of the developments kind of fit that.
Yeah, Legendary is kind of a special project, if you, not special, but they're kind of, they're different than the rest of them, because most of them, they don't have any commercial in the bottom floor.
If you go further north on the Lexon Orange building, they have, and when we see a commercial, it doesn't necessarily always have to be retail. If you go further north, there are some office uses, we have design standards for how we want that to front the street, but it's continuing that kind of profile, those uses along there.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, if I could ask you a question, maybe for clarification, Modera now has stoops or entries on Central up above, they don't?
They don't.
Vegetation.
Okay, all right.
And it's to encourage not just having vegetation, we'll still allow it, it's just that we want that majority use to be that commercial along that street frontage. We're not restricting or prohibiting anything, it's just trying to encourage the majority via standard, a use that's compatible with that street.
How are you encouraging it?
Through the standards. If you look into some of the detail, I believe it's Section 4.3, each of those street typologies spells that out, kind of what's that percentage that we want to see. If you're going to put a use on that street, we want 51% of that to be commercial. Doesn't mean you can't put residential, we just want majority of it to be a commercial use. Exception for, obviously, building lobbies, things of that nature.
Good, excuse me. So what you're recommending is, actually, you're recommending, we are not asking what to do, right? Or I'm wrong? You are asking the property owner, it will be better 51% to be commercial, let's say. But if they don't want to do it, you are not forcing them to do it, right?
It's something that we would have to look at on a case-by-case basis, because we don't know how much of that frontage can be used for commercial or residential. Where it can be used for something outside of, say, a building lobby, a garage entry, yes, we're saying 51% of that needs to be a commercial use.
But this will be very subjective, that one building you'll say, I'd like, who would decide then? One of you guys will decide, this will be very subjective matter. You will look at one building, you say, okay, we want to see 51%, on the other one, you say, no, it's fine. I mean, this is, who will decide? I mean, there should be some guideline, that the owner of the building knows what they have to do. Otherwise, one person in this city will decide how that building will look like, or that commercial building, or whatever building.
If you look in Section 4.3, that's where we spell out those percentages, those standards, so that when our reviewers are going through the project, they can actually measure that. They can measure it against that standard that's included in that section. And that includes the frontages, that includes the parkway widths, sidewalk widths, all of those elements.
Now, these guidelines are before you, the city council, to be able to review and provide staff feedback to implement some of your thoughts, as we've been taking in the last two workshops. And today is also one of those opportunities for council to give us the feedback as we move forward in this process. And then ultimately, as Mr. Calvert stated, it would be part of the guidelines that then... And then ultimately, as Mr. Calvert stated, it would be part of the guidelines that then the staff will be looking at in terms of the conversations that they will be having with developers, and ultimately, the designs that come forward.
As we continue from the public realm to open space, now, again, this is a topic that was very much the focus of Council's attention the last two workshops, and it continues to be. Staff has really gone to great lengths to address the issues that we've heard from City Council. And the slide before you shows what the existing open space chapter is in the downtown specific plan. And the portion on the right shows how we have expanded and detailed the various sections of that open space chapter. First one being, what we heard was the challenge that the open space provided does not create a public benefit that is attractive and activated. And this is especially true when it came to those projects that utilize the additional public open space incentives for additional floor area ratios and additional height. What staff responded to, in fact, was to propose doubling the required publicly accessible open space. So if you noticed, there was a handout that was passed out to all of you on the dais, and it was also included in, in your packet as well. Open space requirements are based on the size of the project, as well as each of those districts. So the majority of the sites in the DSP are going to have a required publicly accessible open space requirement ranging from 5 to 10%, and this would be publicly accessible. They would also have additional open space criteria above and beyond that. But the open space standards have really been also tightened up, so that that publicly accessible open space has to have a minimum area dimension that is substantial. It has to address the street, so whether it's at a corner location, at the intersection of two streets, or whether it be at the center portion that fulfills that separation requirement that was discussed in the urban design section, it really has to address and be accessible at the street level. It cannot be above and beyond, it has to be at the same level as the sidewalk, and it also has to be landscaped.
I'm sorry, that is 10% of the site area?
No. If we refer to the table that you have on the screen before you, these would be the open space requirements. The smaller sites that are less than 10,000 square feet, the majority of those sites would have to have 10% minimum open space, half of which has to be publicly accessible. The larger sites, and up to projects up to 3.0, have a range for anywhere from, from 5 to 10% of minimum publicly accessible open space. And again, this is essentially doubling the existing open space criteria in the DSP.
So sites larger than 10,000 square feet need to have 20% of open space?
Projects larger than 10,000 square feet, yes, would have to, if, for instance, let's say, if it is in the transitional zone, which would be the, the area to the west of Central, for those, same side as the Onyx and the Harrison and, and that side of the street. In this case, based on the proposed guidelines, you'd have a 20% minimum open space requirement, and 10% of that site would have to go towards the publicly accessible open space.
But the rest of the, like, East Broadway, Galleria, Gateway, Maryland, Mid-Orange, and Orange Central, they, they, all they need is to provide 10%?
They would be the same as transitional, so yes, they would still have to provide the 10% publicly accessible open space. So that's, what you have before you on the screen shows the required total open space. Half of that area has to be publicly accessible, and that's already doubling what is the current DSP standard.
I'm having a hard time reading this, because every, 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 everywhere that I went to, it referred to Table 5A, and Table 5A is telling me 20% is Broadway Central, Area A, B, and C, and the rest are 10%. Only transitional is 20%.
If you take a look at the handout that was handed out today, and...
We had an incorrect number in there before we updated that. The chart that's on this slide here references the correct amount.
I have that, but because when I was going through the...
It's, yes, correct. It is this sheet that's on the dais.
Right. No, I know, this one was just given to me, but this one says five. Every, everywhere that I looked at, it referred to 5A, Table 5A, that's why I was kind of confused, so. Lots larger than 10,000 square feet, it needs 20%?
This would be for project sizes.
Project size or site?
Based, it would depend on the project size, and if the, if the project is larger than 10,000 square feet, or has a floor area ratio of 3.0 or less, then 10% of the site area would have to be publicly accessible open space.
And then as you go over...
So the amount, the amount of publicly accessible open space goes up as the size of the project goes up.
And as you go over 3FAR, that number goes up, additional percentage for every half FAR. And the idea behind that is, if you refer back to our first workshop, is to pinch those buildings, make them go up, open up more at the ground level.
And again, the question is that 20% or 10% is 10% or 20% of the site area, not the project size?
Correct. So it would be of the site area.
Site area, yeah, okay.
We heard that open space provided does not create the public benefit that is attractive and activated. That was, again, one of the several comments made by City Council at our last previous two sessions, and the response was to actually identify the specific criteria that would be required in the publicly accessible open space. So it would be standards in terms of the areas, the, the concrete paving, the percentage of landscape at grade, whether or not street, uh, the amount of trees, the amount of seating that's required, that the open space be ringed with active storefronts or active activity, and not just blank walls, and that there be a requirement for either a public art feature, or water feature, or some sort of focal point as part of this publicly accessible open space, and that all designs follow the crime prevention through environmental design standards as well, just to ensure safety and comfortability within these spaces. So those are new standards as part of Chapter Five. And, yes?
I do have a question about paseos, about paseos.
About paseos, yes.
And that's in this section, and I believe, I'm not sure if you've gotten to that yet, but, um, we have a lot of paseos that have not ever been dealt with, as far as landscaping, and is, you know, and I want to make sure that the landscaping for paseos is encouraged. We now have one at the 10, what's the, across from the YMCA. They did their paseo, connecting the two streets, and it's fantastic. And yet, all the other ones that were in the original DSP, the paseos, I don't know if those have ever been addressed. Now, can we go back and look at those paseos and say, look, you know, you didn't, this was not, you, you did not follow the DSP plans then, can you, can we do something about those? And, of course, going into the future, moving into the future, we, we have to do that. I think it's very important.
And thank you for making that point, Councilmember Devine. Yes, paseos did not have a lot of design criteria. In this proposed amendment packet, you'll notice that on, this would be on page five dash, well, five dash eight, and five dash 12, that we will be including design diagrams as well as tables, so that we are clearly identifying that paseos, in this case, have to have a minimum width between 10 feet, maximum width of 10, that there would be a minimum 10% landscaping, which before, there was never a required minimum for landscaping in paseos. And you'll note also, there's a, there's a tree requirement, the plant requirement, and the seating requirement. So when you combine all of those requirements, you are going to ultimately result in a more active and pedestrian-oriented and inviting paseo type of place. We cannot go back. What's, what's built is built, but we can definitely have these criteria to move us in the right direction going forward.
I was, I thought that in the original DSP, that paseos were handled in that way, that they were supposed to be landscaped. There was supposed to be some, because when you look at Lexon Orange, between Lex and on, that's, is that Orange, is that Orange Street, where the Central Theater is?
Mm-hmm.
Orange. Okay, and you look at that, the driveway, or the, into the apartment building, and there's a blank wall, and there's that mechanic's, uh, building, business there. And I was, I thought that they were supposed to put some sort of landscaping anytime there was a wall like that.
That wall is actually the project wall, and at the property next door, which is the parking lot, for the adjacent use, and that's actually not a paseo. So it was basically on a case-by-case basis, there were landscaping requirements in the previous DSP that required 5% of your open space be landscaped, but it's such a small percentage. We've really increased the amount of landscaping requirement, and so moving forward, you'll see these paseos as active spaces in the urban framework.
This is very good, this is very good, yeah.
So, and what you have here before you on the screen is essentially a courtyard, or in this case, a plaza courtyard diagram, so each of those features are, are identified and tabled, and that refers to the chart that's on page five dash 13, so, which spells out your required landscaping, and trees, and seating, and focal points, and special features, and whatnot. The same type of diagram will also be made for paseos, and it is right now currently being rendered. Which brings us to our final chapter for review, which would be Chapter Seven, previously entitled Incentives and Bonuses, which now we are calling the Community Benefits Chapter, because we are specifically addressing the amount and type of community benefits that can be obtained, which then would allow for developers to somewhat gain additional FAR and height. So the previous Chapter Seven was a mixture of various uses that could obtain the incentives and bonuses. And what you have before you on the right-hand side is the, and forgive me, that's mislabeled. It should be Proposed Community Benefits, which is the expanded Chapter Seven standards, that would also include a new criteria, which would be a tiered, tiered bonus, or tiered community benefits system, which Mr. Calvert will go into in just a second. But again, going back to Council's previous comments, we definitely heard that the public benefit hasn't been obtained. The, the Incentives and Bonuses section is not working to create the vision that Council want, wanted. And so, in response to that, we have overhauled the Incentives and Bonuses chapter, and we have created this new Community Benefits chapter that really focuses and hits home on what can be provided for, for the community. The program itself still maintains certain aspects of the Incentives and Bonuses chapter, because there's certain uses that are specific, when it, and, the type of uses that City Council probably still wants to see in your downtown, such as hotels, that there is the desire to have hotels be located and be developed in the greater downtown area, so you would be able to go ahead, up to the maximum permitted by right in the various districts, as well as the FAR. Also, the community benefit of having reuse of buildings and historic preservation, that historic preservation chapters are specific criteria which would allow for maximum development, when you build around a building that is on the historic register. And lastly, or in this case, on the first on the list, would be affordable housing projects. Projects that utilize the SB 18 incentive, and in exchange for providing affordable housing units in the DSP, they would be able to go up to the maximum permitted FAR and height for that specific district. So these very specific standard, or specific uses, would still be allowed to go up to the maximum permitted by, under the, the Community Benefits Program. The new part is this tiered community benefit system, which I'd like to turn over to Mr. Calvert to continue and explain.
And we didn't change the name from Incentives and Bonuses, Community Benefits, just because it sounded better. The, the goal here was that we establish a criteria baseline of things that we, Council, the city sees befitting, that are a benefit that we are essentially requiring to happen in, in our, in these projects. One thing you don't see on this listing more is the sustainability, as a standalone option that they can just choose. And essentially, we did that because building code has caught up. Most buildings are sustainable. Buildings in a downtown environment and urban environment are already sustainable. Why are we letting someone else choose that incentive to go up, when maybe that's not something that's quite a priority right now? The idea is that we establish a handful of things that we see as important, every couple years, we can come back and revisit this. Are we getting the things that we need? Are there new things? Are priorities shifting? But we set the things that we want from this, rather than them necessarily choosing what they are. So what we've done is taken that existing by right FAR, maximum allowed FAR, broke that into three tiers, and at each point, if you want to advance to the next one, there are more requirements for community benefit that you must meet. In Tier One, open space is just required. You saw that in that table before, depending on the site, the size, it's either 5% or 10% publicly accessible must be provided. Tier Two, we're upping that, we're adding another 1% that must be provided, and we're also putting in what we're calling the diversity in housing mix, to encourage larger units that could encourage maybe multi-generational households, households with, families with children, and we're, we're establishing a baseline for that that we want to see. And you'll see in the next slide that we have design requirements and standards that go along with that, to ensure that they're, they're providing the type of units and encouraging the type of, of environment that we want to create in downtown. As you move to Tier Three, that open space goes up by another percent, the publicly accessible portion, not in total, but what goes to the public. That diversity in housing mix goes up. And then we are still leaving a couple options in there that, what we've seen so far may be a priority to the city. We would appreciate Council's feedback as well, if there are other things that we should include. But at this point, we would allow them to choose, choose from a very small pool of elements, and that includes improvements to mobility, maybe there are bike lanes that we want to have added in, maybe we want to encourage car share systems, 2% public art could be another option, or if there are preferred uses that Council has identified that they would like to see downtown.
If I may. Are you including in this concept drop-off, pickup, you know, for future Uber, you know, self-driving cars? I mean, it seems like in the future that we're going to need drop-off areas and pickup areas in front of these commercial, and hotels, et cetera?
So we do have a portico share section that deals with hotels, and that's essentially like a circular drive-in for drop-off. We haven't created specific areas just for Uber drop-off for necessarily autonomous cars. One reason I would say that is that I, I would encourage that we come back to this every couple of years, and that when those things do arise, then we, we can address them or be out in front of them, rather than sit on any updates that we do here and then not touch it again for another 10 or 12 years. Some of those things are a little hard to predict, especially when it comes to, say, autonomous cars.
Just that everything I've been reading and seeing says that we should be preparing now, not waiting until it happens, you know, when they're necessary, because then, there we are.
We can definitely look into that and see how that could affect, especially the publicly accessed areas for some of the garages that may be an appropriate location. So the goal here was, and you can see there's also a commercial section for non-residential buildings, again, we're looking for that community benefit. If you're going to build in Glendale, how are you going to also help improve Glendale, whether that, you know, including open space, the diversity in housing mix? If you were to pursue Tier Three, we would also recommend that there be a cap on the number of studios that could be built in that project. We have seen some proposals come through before, where they have given us a certain number of two-bedroom units, three-bedroom units, and then they're largely studios from there. Again, the idea is diversity in housing, so we encourage one, we limit another at the same time. And we're, we're saying around 10% on that, so that we can get a broad cross-section of housing units.
And again, I'm sorry, everything I've been reading is about mini apartments, and smaller apartments, and 400-square-foot apartments. Are we, are we limiting our, our design, or our, our units in the future by doing this? Or is that something that eventually will be acceptable? I mean, I just went to a, you know, to look at an apartment, com- I mean, I just went to a, you know, to look at an apartment complex. It's going to be opening soon, and their studio apartment is big enough to put in two mini apartments, like I'm reading about. You know, put on all the wall here, and there's another bed and another, and then there are other cities that are building complexes that have 400 square feet with community rooms. And, you know, I don't want to see us in a box where we can't move in the direction of smaller units, more occupancy, lower rents, et cetera.
So right now, this move, what we're proposing here is in response to Council, looking for those larger units to encourage more diverse households.
Right, right.
In terms of prohibiting that, right now, we don't because we have the minimum square footages. But again, that's not to say that, say we've calibrated the system and we have more families living in our downtown, or more multi-generational households, whatever it was that we were trying to achieve, and we found we balanced the system, we come back in a couple of years and we can look at that as well. Again, it's the idea that we revisit this enough that we structure it in a way that we can update.
Or if someone comes in and wants to build something like that, we wouldn't say, no, you can't do it, would we?
At this point, we do have required limits or minimum standards for the unit sizes. So at this point, a mini unit, or I should say, a mini apartment would not be permitted. They would require variances the same way that we have the, the property down the street on Broadway that was approved with miniature apartment sizes, but that was by variance. So they would have that option of move going before you by variance, but at this point in time, they would need to comply with the minimum unit sizes established in the DSP.
And speaking of that diversity in housing mix, as we stated, in order to encourage diverse households, there's a number of design standards that would also need to be put in place. And you can see some of those listed in there, and they pertain to en suite bathrooms, the location in the buildings, amenities not being just courtyards, but maybe there's open play spaces as well. So you'll see a list of those, those components. So the last thing we wanted to do was, was test basically all of the ideas that we've put forward here. We've looked at it from an economic perspective, but is it buildable and what's the result? Just putting a bunch of words on paper and a bunch of numbers doesn't guarantee we're going to get what we want. So we started off looking at the existing DSP and what can we currently do? And looking at this kind of massing model, you know, as we've heard, flat roof lines. We, the building separation is not required to be oriented towards the street. They could put this on the alley. Again, this is not necessarily what somebody would always do, but it's kind of, this is what the code currently would allow to happen, or DSP. The sidewalks, as we've heard, they're not wide enough. Balcony projections, we've seen a few projects where that does come out over the right-of-way, kind of creating that imposing nature of the building. The continuous massing of facade, not having the breaks in there, not opportunities to create separations. Garage entries, creating large portals on primarily pedestrian streets. The open, or the planters counting towards open space. And then areas that are just kind of small, because they're adding in these planters and kind of piecemealing this open space together, rather than something large and contiguous. So all of the things that we've talked to you about today, that is, that is in that document in front of you, we tested through this, this example here. And what we did is created a roofline modulation. We created a building separation that faces the street so that it's able to, appears to distinct buildings in many ways for a pedestrian. We were able to create wider sidewalks. The balconies are all partially recessed or fully recessed. Facade modulation, so you can see those breaks, those rhythms, the visual interest in both the facade, but also at the pedestrian level. Plantings, and that's, you know, we've, when we did the walking tours, we saw how many of those above-grade planters that were supposed to be at-grade planting, putting a mechanism in there to make sure that we're getting that and not a bunch of planter boxes on every project. Publicly accessible open space, and in this case, in, with this site, 5.2 maximum FAR, we could get up to 16% publicly accessible open space. You can see in this example how it's integrated along with the building separation. Canopies to bring that scale down, the outdoor seating, so it's an activated street frontage. On-site public art, if they were to pursue that opportunity as part of Tier Three. What this also does is ensure that even this taller portion is no taller than that prior image that we showed you before. This is the exact same building. In fact, on the far-left side, we actually brought the building height down because we have that modulation requirement in place. We look at it in plan view, the one on the left, existing one on the right, is what we could potentially accomplish. The area outlined in red, that is at-grade, area that can be used by pedestrians. We're on the assumption that alleys or separations exist between other buildings, but the street frontages, the street-facing, that's the amount of at-grade open space. In this case, that's how much we have.
So both of those images have the same number of units in them?
Same, same exact size site, same exact size FAR is applied to this site. I don't recall the number off the top of my head right now. One of the things that was very important to this, though, and you'll notice in your chart, is that we removed the requirement for stories. It's, it's another one of those measures that's kind of pushing those forces, pulling the shape of the box. What we have on this left side is that, that is the same height as the, the building essentially on the left, with another floor in between. And what that does, allow us to displace that area at grade, the wider sidewalks, the public open space, and put that in as a floor. Without changing the density, without changing the height of the building, it's still the same. So this is the same FAR, it's the same construction type. It's essentially, we've moved the food around on the plate a little bit differently and given us a result that what we believe is more amenable to the priorities that Council has identified.
So next steps. Staff will continue finalizing the remainder of the DSP chapters and ensuring that all of the various languages consistent throughout. So that would be addressing the things such as the Artsoc and the Arts and Entertainment Districts, the elimination of the Glendale Redevelopment Agency notations, and just making sure that the entire document is up to today's language and criteria. We would continue with the public outreach to various civic groups. Just have you note that, and as noted in your staff report, that we have a meeting scheduled or coming up with Downtown Glendale Association, with the Glendale Homeowners Coordinating Council, and with the Glendale Chamber of Commerce. Also to point out that we have reached out to all of the tenant rental representatives that submitted emails during the rental housing program that Peter Zobeck just presented for you. So we have contacted all of those union reps and have offered our, offered up the suggestion to meet with them and to discuss the DSP updates and standards. And we have also spoken with Bronwyn Keiner from the Go Glendale, who is the representative of six of the largest rental projects, the multifamily residential projects here in the downtown. And she has promised to relay all of the DSP amendments as well to those emails and those residents within these six larger projects. So we have reached out to the rental community here in the downtown specific plan area. So with those civic groups and renters, we will continue the outreach. We are also scheduled to present the amendments for the Design Review Board for their review on February the 14th. That would include the opportunity for the public to add their input at that time as well. So we invite everyone to come and, and speak with regards to the downtown specific plan at the Design Review Board meeting of February the 14th. We are scheduled to go before the Planning Commission, and this is a requirement for the code modifications and amendments. We're required to obtain the recommendation by the Planning Commission. We are scheduled for a special planning commission. This would be held on Tuesday, February the 19th. And so again, we invite the public to come and to listen to an overview of all of the various amendments. And so in this particular instance, we've only covered and addressed Chapters Four, which is the Urban Design Chapter, Chapter Five, which is the Open Space, and Chapter Seven, which is now the Community Benefits Chapter. For Planning Commission, we will present, will be presenting all of the amendments and going through all of the changes throughout the entire document. So again, that gives one more opportunity for the public to come in and to submit their comments with regards to this. And we will be wrapping up all of those various inputs and comments and coming back to you for introduction scheduled on March the 5th. That concludes our presentation, and both of us are available to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Thanks for the presentation. Councilmember Najarian, do you have any questions?
I'm, I'm very glad we're doing this. It's, I think we were, Council was scoffed at when we decided to put a hold on development last year and, and look into this, but I think we can all see how we're going to be making a better downtown, more livable, more walkable, more attractive. So I really applaud staff for all their hard work and going through these little details and speaking with us and taking us on the tours and getting our thoughts. So I look forward to getting this out there and, you know, turning a new page in Glendale Development Standards.
Thank you. Mr. Carpenter?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a couple of general questions overall. I think I, I voted for the moratorium to, to basically find out what the problems were. And to me, at that time, the problem was the incentives that we were giving. For example, the publicly accessible open space, if you provided 1,000 square foot of open space, publicly accessible open space, you could get 10,000 square foot of building extra. And to me, that stays, remains the same. Am I correct?
Not necessarily. So if, if you look at, basically, the entry for a project, we have also raised the standard requirement for open space there. We may not have done a one-for-one when it came to the Community Benefit Program, but that's because we raised the standard much, much higher, and in fact, doubled it essentially just to enter into our system. So we may not have gone as high. When we tested economically, most sites capped out around 12 or 13. That's what was, could actually work for a site. There were a handful, and this is where the larger ones come into play, where we could potentially achieve 16 or 17 publicly accessible, publicly accessible open space area. But you don't see that increase as great in the community benefit, because we're asking for a lot more coming out of the gate.
Okay. So let me, let me rephrase my question. We had two, two options. The existing one is two. One is by right, and the other one was, was by incentives, right? So if you provided more open space, publicly accessible open space, you would get the incentives. Now we have, when I'm looking at this, this program, the first by right one, which is the Tier One currently, it's almost the same, except some areas, four areas, it dropped from 2.5 FAR to 2.0 FAR, which is Mid-Orange, Maryland, East Broadway, and Alex Theater. There, the only difference between Tier One today, the proposed one, and the existing code, which is by right, is these four FARs. Am I correct? Okay. So, and Tier Three, and the incentive, the existing incentive program that we have, which was the second option, and the Tier Three one that we, we proposing, is pretty much, pretty much the same, as far as the, the height, the FAR and everything else. The only difference is we're asking more on the incentive, on the, on the incentives, we, we're asking more from them.
Correct.
All right, correct? So currently, with, under the current zoning, they had to provide so much open space to get to the incentives. And of the Tier Three right now, that, that, that open space that they have to provide increased by maybe 10% or 5% or so. Am I correct?
Go ahead.
Okay. Councilmember Garpetian, rest of the council members, the previous Incentives and Bonuses Chapter essentially provided a ratio for additional FAR. For every one square foot of additional publicly accessible open space, you are allowed, I believe it was 10 square feet of, of additional building area.
Right.
Oftentimes, the developers for those larger projects had to, they provided, I'm, I'm using my own experience, you know, 1,000, 1,500, I think the maximum was around 2,000 square feet of additional publicly accessible open space. And unfortunately, under the previous standards, it did not all have to be continuous, contiguous, or accessible to the general public in this, well, it had to be publicly accessible, but it could even be the, the extent of a, of a widened sidewalk. For this particular system, the way that it is now structured, or what we're proposing, is that no longer is there sort of a ratio of, you know, one square foot of publicly accessible open space for so many square feet of building area. It's essentially looking at, okay, this is what you're permitted by right. If you want to get to the next level of potential development, you are going to have to provide a much more robust publicly accessible open space area, because we've amended the criteria. We have introduced minimum areas, minimum amenities, and we've doubled the amount of publicly accessible open space. So not only are you providing the, double the amount of publicly accessible open space, but on top of that, you're providing one additional percent of the side area. Councilmember Garpetian, you spoke to, what's the amount? In this case, it's 1% more additional publicly accessible open space and the diversity in housing mix. So you're including additional larger, and I don't want to say family-friendly, because we're not supposed to say family-friendly housing, but if the intention is to create larger units for multi-generational tenants, for larger households, if you so will, you're then also requiring or incentivizing these type of uses. So once you get to that level, then you're allowed to go up a certain fraction of your height and a certain fraction of your additional floor area. You go above and beyond that, then you're allowed to go up to the maximum. And that maximum is the same as it was in the previous Incentive and Bonuses Chapter. It's just instead, you are now bundling these community benefits, and the more community benefits you provide, the greater your potential development.
So also on Table 7C, it indicates that one of the, on Tier Two, one of the incentives is to provide 15% two-bedrooms or three-bedrooms, minimum of 15% of two-bedrooms or three-bedrooms.
Correct.
But my understanding was that, as a whole, whatever is built in downtown, 27% are two-bedrooms or as it is. Am I correct?
Correct.
Okay. So why is this incentive 15%?
That is to fit that specific profile of standards that we've asked for, for units. That, we're not saying you can't build the 27. We're just saying a chunk of what you would build needs to fit this profile of the location of the building, the, as they incorporate the play area, the design standards that we've, we've included for those units. Because essentially, we're trying to avoid having a lot of two-bedroom units that are only amenable to households for roommates. In this case, we're creating households that may be appropriate for children, or if someone has their grandmother that lives with them. And that does require some things that are different, including bathrooms, including orientation, including location in the building. So we're still striving to at least maintain that percentage we're getting now, but we want a chunk of those to fit this profile as well.
And that might even, forgive me, it might even go back to Councilmember Devine's earlier comments, where what if a developer wants to come in and create a project that's all micro-units? Well, in this case, if they want to reach the maximum potential development, they would need to provide housing, diversity in housing, those two and three-bedroom units as part of their project. Otherwise, they're going back before you with the variance to code, which I'm not sure in terms of, we haven't really discussed variances for the incentives and bonuses, or in this case, the Community Benefits Chapter. But essentially, this is building in the requirement that there be a diversity in, in unit mix for these projects.
Going back to Councilmember Carpenter's question, in your response, if I understood that correctly, what you're saying is that the 15% requirement is geared more towards specifically type of two-bedroom units that would be, how'd you phrase it? Like, I guess we can't use the word family-friendly and?
Just a, a more amenable to a larger household, a different familial structural, if you will.
Right. Well, why can't, why can't we up that standard to whatever, whatever the, the ratio is now, to 27% or whatever it is, and then, and require all of it to be amenable to larger households, as you?
And we absolutely could, and that's up to Council's direction there. We, we wanted to put this out as something on the, kind of our, our starting point. If Council would like to see it go higher, we can look into that.
Yeah, I, I do, because the way, the way I understand, I don't have those numbers, to be honest with you. This was, I was told that 27% of the units that were built in downtown in the last few years are, are two-bedrooms or three-bedrooms, mostly two-bedrooms. I love that. years are two bedrooms or three bedrooms, mostly two bedrooms, all of that 27%. But by requiring, requiring them to have 15%, you know, whatever you want to call it, to accommodate whoever, all they have to do is come in and provide 15%, and the rest will be singles and one bedrooms. So by upping that, I think it will, it will make a huge difference. And also, one other point I wanted to make, and we talked about this, I want to make sure that parks incentive program that we had has gone away. So if they, you know, the parks fees that they pay, the development impact fees for parks and, and open space, so if they had provided, they were getting a big break on 50% or 75%, is that still in place or has, because we, I, I remember that, I talked about it for that to, to be removed, that that won't be part of this incentive program.
Councilmember Garpetian, yes, you are reminding us of the tiered open space system for those projects that were in the pipeline. And so if you were in the pipeline, or if you were at certain uses, you were allowed to reduce your parking, park and open space incentives. And I do believe that that is no longer the case.
So for upcoming projects as well, they will not get a break on the parks' development impact fees that they have to pay?
Mr. Garpetian, I think we're going to fix that with the inclusionary housing when that comes back.
Okay. I'm getting ahead of myself, I'm sorry. Also, the one thing that I always talked about was the number of units to have a density in this, in downtown specific plan, because that will dictate a lot of things that personally I want to achieve as, as far as the size of the units, the number of bedrooms, and everything else. We talked about this. I don't think the FAR will, will address that. It's something that we need to look into, to have a number of dwelling unit per acre, maximum density. So if, again, if you have a 3.0 floor area ratio for a one-acre lot, that's 125,000 square feet, 130,000 square feet, if you don't have any, any maximum density, you can't, you can't develop 120, 130, 140 units of, of one bedrooms and singles. But if you have a maximum density, then you will achieve 90 units, but your square footage will stay the same, and you will have, naturally will have larger units. So I think that's something that we need to look into. That's, that's my thing.
I would support that.
I think density, density is, is something that, we've seen the results, I mean, how small the units will get, and how many, the number of units of one bedrooms will increase if you don't have any density.
And actually, if we could turn to our economic consultant that could help describe some of that, she ran an analysis for us. We looked at various levels of dwelling units per acre, as part of this, as a way we could try to determine the outcome of unit sizes.
Hello, I'm Kathy Head from Kaiser Marston. You'll remember me from the inclusionary. So we did run a scenario based, a couple scenarios based on density rather than FAR, and we increased the unit sizes by 25% over the average size that they're being done under the FAR standard. We did it at 45 units to the acre as a measure, because we'd heard a discussion of 40 to 50 units per acre as being what the council had asked to see as, as an analysis. So we did that. The impact is, you don't end up getting all the way up to that FAR because the units would just be too big at that point. And we're already, the numbers I ran, we got to 25% bigger units than are currently being built. And so when we ran that, even with a, and then ran it also with the SB 1818 density bonus as well, added on to it, so you could get more units, because again, we're measuring by density now as opposed to FAR. The best-case scenario on, on the sites we looked at was that the land value fell by about 31%. That's on the smaller sites, the 2.0 FAR sites that you're looking at. When you get to the 3.0 FAR sites against the tiered system, you end up with a 64% decrease in land value. So it has a substantial impact. You can make that policy decision, but just know then, that what it will do is it will impact development and what people pay for land, and whether they build residential.
Well, the, so the land value will, will drop.
Right.
If, if the number of, that's, of course, I mean, the developers will pay per door.
Sure.
They, they, they can build so many units, they can build 50 units, they sell, I don't know, $100,000 a door, that's $5 million. If they can build 40 units, they pay $4 million. That's, of course, that's, that's given. But my thing is, right now, I don't want to control the land values in Glendale, but the reason that everything spikes is because I said, look, my land has no density limit. You can build 100,000 square foot on this property. Instead of 80 units, you can, if you can park it, you can build it, right? You can build 130 units. So it's worth 13 million versus 8 million, for example. But that doesn't help me to, to get the product that I want.
Sure, no.
Or go, basically, you know, to, to provide some. We have our share of the one bedrooms and the singles and everything else, and some two bedrooms. But I think we want to, we want to get a different product. And in order to achieve that, you need to have some.
Right. No, and that's absolutely legitimate. That's a policy decision to make. But just recognize that the, and you've said it, so I don't think you disagree, is that land values will adjust to reflect that policy.
Right. And I'm not, you know, I don't think we ever talked about 40 units an acre. I think there are, we have areas that like, is it SFMU that has 89 units an acre? And that's, that's a lot of, that's a lot of units on a small site.
No, that's right. No, and in fact, we ran that. And so, because we've run all these scenarios, we've run all the tiered scenarios, and we ran the density scenarios. If you're starting off at 80 units the acre as your base, and you apply the 1818 density bonus to that, based on the mix that we're seeing and the mix that's been discussed in the tiered system, you end up at a 3.2 FAR on the small sites.
Essentially, we end up where we're currently at.
Yeah.
And, and the point there, too, is that, and we can do two approaches. We could do the dwelling units per acre, or we could also go back. What we're trying to propose here is that we put a cap on the studios, and we put a requirement on the larger units to try to help balance that out. Otherwise, yeah, that density already achieves what we already allow in terms of FAR.
That's right.
So you're saying if they, if they use an 89 units acre with the SB 1818, with SB 1818, we are, our hands are tied behind our backs.
Correct.
They can propose that anyways.
No, that's right.
If we don't have a density, that number of units will go up, the FAR may not change much, but the number of smaller units will go up.
You know, it's just interesting, because when we looked at this analysis and compared to the policy decisions being considered, the mix of units that is currently being built, and you're right, it is right around 27% two bedrooms right now, large percentage of studios, and then in a very small percentage of two bedrooms, very small percentage of two bedroom, um, three bedrooms, excuse me, is, what's interesting, though, about that mix is the studios and the one-bedroom units aren't that different in terms of size. So there, it's like an 80, you know, on average, about an 80-square-foot difference between the studios and the ones. So they really are effectively, so if you, if you limit the 10% studios, say that's the cap, they'll switch to the one bedrooms, and I think it'll, you won't have studios, you'll have one bedrooms. So you're right, it'll still be small units, it's just what they're called. But I do think that, even as you sit right now, using an FAR system, you have an underlying density measurement for the purposes of 1818, because you have to. And so you have an underlying 90 units the acre on the 2.0 sites, 100 units the acre on the 3.0 sites. So you do, in a way, you end up in the same place if you're leaving the density thresholds at 90 and 100. Does that make sense?
It does, but you're, you're assuming that everybody's going to use SB 1818. But if you have a density limit, you are limiting that project to a certain number of units, right? And, and based on that, they can use the SB 1818. The FAR going from 3.0 to 3.2, it will happen regardless if they use SB 1818.
Correct. No, I agree 100%.
So instead of having so many singles or one bedrooms, I want to have, I want to have a different, different mix, if you will.
Well, I mean, you are going to have to balance that back, though. So if there are bigger units at that higher density level, you're going to end up having impacts of changing construction type and changing parking with the, with the bigger, with the bigger units. And so economically, it may not make sense to use 1818. As it sits, the way the unit mixes work, it, because I ran, I ran base cases at the 90, and I ran then with the, with the density bonus added to it, it still makes sense. It's still, with the mix of basically 30% twos and threes, mainly twos, 10% studios, and then the rest, one bedrooms, running that mix, oh, with 25%. No, that was when I was using this lower density, sorry. So many scenarios in my head. When I ran it with the, with the 90 units to the acre density, it still made sense to take advantage of the 1818 density bonus.
Let them take advantage of.
Yeah, yeah.
But again, you have, you have this, I'm going around the same circle.
I know, so am I, so it's okay. We could do it again.
Okay.
No, I voiced my opinion, so I don't want to drag this for too long. But I think we need to have some sort of a density limit to, not everybody wants to use SB 1818, if they can fit a good project in their, with the FAR that we have. And these are, these are high numbers.
Right.
Look, these are not small chunk.
No, I mean, I think the one thing to keep in mind, though.
7.5 FAR, we have some areas, 5.2 FAR, that, yes, they have to provide some incentives to get to that point.
Right.
These are big numbers. And no matter what, if you don't have any limit on the, on the, on the units, then you got to have a huge, huge number of units, all singles and one bedrooms.
Although, yeah.
I personally have an issue with that.
Although, that hasn't been borne out. I mean, that hasn't been borne out, I mean, because there are 27, 28% two bedrooms, even without this restriction.
And I don't know if that's enough or not.
No, I understand. And that's something to think about. The other thing to think about, too, though, is what the developers and the market will bear. And so you can, you can put a density limit in, and as it sits, I personally think it'll end up being about the same. If you use, if you use the 90 and 100, I think it'll end up being about the same as the tiered system. But if you, if you lowered it, I think people will build somewhat bigger units. But I think if you leave it at that level, they won't, because that's not what the market's asking them to do. Our market's asking them to build smaller units.
Again, I think, I think, I'm not sure about that.
Well, why wouldn't they, why aren't they building bigger units now if that's what the market wants to do? I can, I can use a West Hollywood example. West Hollywood tried.
It's profitable, they make more.
Right, right, right. Well, that's what the market's telling them. The market's telling them, I make more money.
Doesn't mean the demand is there. I mean, that doesn't mean the demand. If you build a building full of single units and studios, you're going to have people coming in there. But we haven't seen a building that has a significant wide spectrum of.
Right.
Of unit mix to, to bear that out. And as a council member, my goal is not to maximize the real estate value of anyone on brand.
Sure.
My value, aside from looking at the architectural diagrams and the open space, is to create a city for the future that isn't going to be packed, you know, elbow to elbow with these buildings. So that's why I do support what Councilman Garpetian is saying, and I would like to look forward for some future discussions with staff as to how that FAR relates to the, the density numbers. And at this point, I'm not able to sit down and put all that in front of me and really analyze that. But I'd like to look at that, but I do, I mean, his, the councilman's main point is, let's also look at the, the density, the size of these units, the number of these units as we go around, looking at the, the envelopes and the packaging and the pedestrian and all that other stuff. So.
And I give you a couple of examples of projects that were built in 70s and 80s, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, and Monterey Towers, we were talking about that. They're 100% occupied at all times.
Right.
And they're large units, they have good amenities. Also, look at the project downtown. Our downtown is a little bit different than, I don't know, downtown LA or downtown, I don't know, Manhattan, wherever. Because downtown is surrounded by residential areas, dense residential areas. So it's not too far away from, and if you look at the projects that are being built half a block away from Central, on Salem, on California, on whatever, all of those streets, right, on Wilson, they are all larger units. There are 1,500, 1,800 square feet, 1,400 square foot units, and people are, they're lining up to purchase them or to rent them. It's not that the demand is not there, the demand is there.
And I'm sorry, I'm miscommunicated. I didn't mean the demand wasn't there, and I think Councilmember Najarian said it exactly correctly. The reason they're building the smaller units is they're making more money from them. But if you had a density limit that was lower, people would build bigger units, because, and I, as I said, I went 25% bigger in those units, and it does, you know, create that difference. My point is, absolutely, there's market demand for bigger units. Not saying that. There's absolutely market demand. There's just, as we sit, it's financially more beneficial to build smaller units. But my other point is, if you want to get the bigger units, you can't be at 90 to 100 units the acre. Because if you're 90, 100 units the acre, they're going to build the smaller units.
Got it. Thanks.
That's what he's saying.
That's what you're saying.
No, no, but I mean, that's why I just want to make clear that the 90.
I understand.
I think at this point, just based on, on the conversation that, that the council is having on this particular item, if it would be okay with, with the mayor and the council, for us to bring just this one piece back possibly, and Bradley and I were talking on the side. And the reason why I say just this one piece is because of the timelines that, as you know, we have in place, and I think we've received some great feedback from council on all other items. This one seems like we need a little more discussion and clarification, I think, for all council members. And so to be able to make deadlines, et cetera.
Can I make a suggestion? I mean, we're still at the process we're initiating. We've had the discussion, and staff and the consultants are still going to be working together on this. I mean, can it just, we go forward to the planning commission and work the different options, present them to the planning commission, come back to council?
We can, but I, I think it would be good for us to get some level of understanding from the council in terms of where they all are on this item. And I don't think we have that today. That's my, my recommendation on this particular item. And I think we could bring that one back, maybe on the 12th of February, but.
Well, not with me.
Maybe not with you. But Bradley can, can cover this.
And I was just going to add, I mean, we have all this economic analysis information already, we had already requested, we can bring this back as a separate individual item. It was just too much, too dense to try to pack into here, but we can come back with that, and essentially do a side-by-side comparison. How does all of this work? What is most likely going to get us to that intended result? If you're saying that we would like to increase that percentage with the, with the tiered system, we'll go up and try to hold everything at kind of a 30% if that is an acceptable number, or?
I, I don't know. I think, I said, I said everything I said. I want to thank you guys for bringing this report. This is a very complete and comprehensive report. It was very helpful as far as, you know, it addressed many of the concerns that I personally, and I think many of us had, when we had the walking tour and the, the open spaces, you know, little patch here and little patch there, nights all combined, and it's open to sky, basically. It's, it's approachable, it's usable, it's going to, these are all great. They're all great. As far as giving incentives to go higher and build more, I want to be a little careful on that, and as far as the, because that was our main concern. Because we gave incentives, as William mentioned, for every one square foot, they built 10 more square feet of building. So again, I think we need to look at, I don't have the magic answer tonight to tell you I want 80 units or 100 units or 20 units, but I want to make sure that we study this. We've done all this work, we put a moratorium in, which, you know, didn't happen very often in Glendale. So I want to have a good result, so all this work will have a, have a better result, basically.
Ultimately, this is your vision, Mr. Mayor and, and council, and we want to make sure that, that you're all comfortable with all the pieces that are going forward. As you know, we have a timeline based on, on the moratorium expiring. That's why we, we have been feverishly moving toward that timeline. And so it's, this one piece, though, feels like needs more discussion, unless I hear, you know, otherwise from the council. And we'll try and figure it out in, in the next week or two in terms of when we are able to bring that back.
Okay. Thank you. Any more questions?
Thank you.
Mr. Devine, questions?
Well, speaking of vision, and my vision is always practically the same. On, I have a question on, this is 4-50, and it's about. On, I have a question on, this is 4-50, and it's about the pedestrian realm, street, street, streetscape requirements. I'm not sure, what, what is the code for, required by the city? It says plant street trees and street landscaping as specified, spaced a minimum of 25 feet apart or as required by the city. What does that mean? What's the difference?
Councilmember Devine, councilmembers, the, the plan that we're referring to is the Public Works Maintenance Services Plan because each tree, each street has its own specific street tree and street location pattern. So if a particular development is located on a street that has an established streetscape, street tree plan, that that would, that particular project would adhere to the Public Works Maintenance.
And you're, when you say street tree plan, you're talking about distance between the trees?
It would be both the street tree species and whether or not, for certain circumstances, such as on Brand Boulevard, they have tree wells spaced at a specific distance apart based on the Brand Boulevard plan. We would just like those projects to adhere to that particular plan. At all other locations, the recommendation is for 25 feet minimum spacing.
Because I, because I was on San Fernando and, you know, it's, it's such a beautiful, in spaces where they have commercial, they have a lot of trees and it's really very pedestrian friendly, and so I thought, how far apart are these? Because I was, as I say, I was down on Pacific and Broadway, and the trees are like, God, they must be 50 feet apart. And then on San Fernando, I counted, it was nine feet apart, and it was so nice, and I thought, this makes it, well, my feet. So maybe they were 12 feet apart or maybe a little more, but they were closer together and it was so much nicer. And so I, you know, I looked at this at the plan and I thought, well, I, I would like to encourage us to move, get these trees closer together than 25 feet. And also, you have in this one spot where you say you are encouraging 36-inch box trees, and instead of encouraging, I say, "Let's start with 36-inch boxes and then maybe go from there," but, because a lot of times, we just get twigs and then it, they never end up being really full and shady and, and I don't know about the others, but I, I get complaints about that and it's, it's just not pedestrian friendly. And so that, that's my recommendation as far as the landscaping and the streetscape. I'm really happy about the open space. I know you've changed that. I've had a lot of issues with those little tiny areas around apartment buildings and hotels that are, they're counting it as open space and it's like two feet. So I'm very happy that you're changing that and being more specific about the, how the open space is placed, et cetera. And I, and the whole plan, the whole, whole project here, or the whole plan, again, is, is excellent, and, and I know that you've spent a lot of time on it, and I hope that we can adhere to everything that we say in here, that we do it, you know, that we will actually do it. So, thank you. That's it for me.
Thank you. Sylvia Daniel?
Thank you for bringing this report to us. I just have a general comment, and that is that I would like to say in this report why it still is in developing more of a, what they can't do to be in the report, not what they have to do. That's important because architects are creative, they're not like engineers, however. So if you limit them, we wouldn't have these beautiful buildings from 100 years ago, 200 years ago, 1,000 years ago, kings, they would say what to do and they would do it, and we wouldn't see all these beautiful buildings from old ages. So what we have to do, as I said, I'm glad that you are saying what they can't do. They can't have stucco all over Glendale or stucco buildings, solid concrete building. So I don't want to see that, but not to tell the architect what they have to do. So limit in the report or in the future why you're developing this to just say what you don't want to see and not what they have to do, because the architects, they want to have their signature on it, and the employee of City of Glendale should not dictate them how the building should look like or what they have to do. So this is general comment which I have, and I hope you will consider that. Thank you.
Thank you. Going back to the issue of the size of the units, Bradley, you said that there's, this, these changes contain methods to encourage units that are not merely large because they may be large, but they, they may be occupied by a bunch of roommates, but that are fit for larger households, as you put it? Did I understand that correctly?
Correct.
And how, how do we accomplish that? How is that done?
They are part of the standards that we would include if you were to pursue that tier. So whatever that percentage may be of those units, those units have to follow these requirements. There, there are other cities that have done that, and I believe we talked about this before. There, there were two cities that both had a minimum requirement on percentage of units that may be amenable to families or multi-generational households. One had standards and one didn't. The one that had standards usually clocks in around 26, 28% of children living in their urban environment, while the other didn't achieve that because essentially, without those standards, they're trying to create these units as small as possible, which is more likely to end up in a roommate center.
So what are those standards? My question is, what are the standards that create the circumstances necessary for those units to be geared more towards larger households?
A number. There are some that are the minimum square footage size, the location in the building, especially if you are looking at a situation where you'd like to have more children in the urban environment, those type of units tend to want to be in the proximity of one another, usually surrounded or oriented around an open space or a play space or something of that nature. Some of them even get down, you look at some cities, and, and we haven't fleshed all of these standards out yet, it's, it's extra gypsum board between the units so that there's a sound buffering. It's lower height in the building because maybe a senior citizen or maybe a family with children doesn't want to wait forever to go up to 10th floor, 15th floor, whatever it may be. We have a couple others here, they include some common indoor space that can be used for, say, families. In lieu of a business center or in addition to, maybe there's a homework room. I've actually seen that used in one building and that was extremely popular in terms of the type of households it also attracted.
So there are, there is a precedent that we can follow that? Okay, it gets that accomplished. In terms of the sidewalks and the setbacks, I think I'm looking at 413 of the packet in staff report. Right? I'm looking at, especially the, the table that's at the bottom of the page. So for mixed-use commercial now, the new width has to be 18 feet, right? What was it before? What is, what is it now, I should say?
Mayor Sinanian, councilmembers, the width, for the DSP, for these streets in particular, because we did not have a commercial mixed-use zone, this would be essentially what would be on Central, would be a 12-foot minimum.
So currently, it's 12-foot minimum?
Correct.
That would go up to 18, 18, and then mixed-use residential 16? That's also from 12?
Residential, in this case, was just a six-foot setback from the property line. So wherever the property line was, you'd have a six-foot landscape buffer.
All right, this is a significant increase then. And then residential, is it 15 feet whereas it used to be?
And again, it varied by street depending on what the curb face to property line dimension is, but then it would be an additional six feet where if, for instance, the curb face to property line dimension was eight feet, you'd have a total of 14 feet from curb to building face.
Okay. So this increases, there's, this is not a much of an increase here?
It's not as much as it would be on the commercial mixed-use and the residential mixed-use.
And primary, it says, it says, "See Brand Boulevard Streetscape Plan"?
Yes, and that would be, it is not part of the, not part of the downtown specific plan. Again, this would be part of the Public Works documentation.
We did the same for Artsoc as well, knowing that we're developing that vision right now to not proceed that, let that be its own standalone plan.
Okay. All right, well, I want to thank staff for preparing this report. I think from the comments, it's apparent that it's, this is, these are welcome changes that are being proposed and perhaps these, you know, we should have looked at this much earlier, as Councilmember Najarian said. And I want to thank my colleagues for their thoughtful questions and comments. I, I hope that you have enough direction to proceed with this. And with that one issue, the respect to the, the number of units as opposed to just merely looking at FAR, that's going to come back.
We will do our best to, to see what we can schedule in the next couple of weeks in, in preparation for DRB as well as the planning commission.
Okay, very well.
And again, the planning commission does serve as the, the clearinghouse to be able to, you know, look at the recommendations and, and really delve into what the options are for the council ultimately. And so depending on some of the feedback we get from council, they could look at a, a number of options, if, if you have a couple of options for them to look at before it comes back to you.
Okay, very well. Well, thank you. You have directions?
No.
No, just the direction from council, I think they have the directions, so we can move on to the next item. Mr. Clerk or Ms. Clerk, who's going to read the closed session items into the record, please?
Conference with real property negotiators, property location, city-owned property at 2713 Honolulu.